Councilmember Burks, Vice Mayor Candell, Mayor Anderson are present. Councilmember Geringer and Bliss are both absent, excused. Brings us to adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move we adopt the agenda.
A second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. That brings us to the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd stand and join me, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That brings us to public comments. This is an opportunity to speak on an item that is not on our agenda, but within the purview of the city. Do we have any public comments tonight? All right. With that, we'll move on to presentation. Senior Services Commission Annual Update. Come on down. Well, if we need more chairs, we can get more chairs. Don't be afraid, we don't bite.
Please come up, yeah, please.
Okay, be a little afraid. All right, Teri. Welcome, good evening.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Susan. Cam. My name is Teri Ann Black. I'm Chairman of Senior Services Commission. Before I begin our report, I'd like to ask our Senior Service Commission members to acknowledge who they are. We have Conrad Bries, he's our newest member, John Jenkins, who is not here tonight, Ruth McKeckin, Erin Partridge, who is not here tonight, Sandra Smith, and I don't see Sandra, and Dorothy Walker. The Commission members have worked very, very hard this year and are bringing an exciting program to life for the Lafayette community. Please give them a warm welcome. Thank you. In addition, we are most grateful for the assistance of our Administrative Assistant, Maureen Newman. Oh, there's Maureen. Our Head of Parks and Recreation, Jonathan Kataniyagi, and the Head of the Lafayette Spirit Van, Mary Brunz. I'm not sure if Mary's here. 2019 has been an eventful year for our Commission. We have provided you with a paper copy of our PowerPoint presentation. Please feel free to ask any questions. Our 2019 goals: Lead the process to establish Lafayette as an age-friendly city. Continue partnership with the Lafayette Community Foundation at the 2019 Senior Symposium. Represent Lafayette Senior Services Commission at the Senior Mobility Action Council. Continue awareness of other Commission's agenda items and get involved with their issues that affect seniors. Continue to investigate the best methods of identifying and communicating with homebound seniors. Through Lafayette Senior Services, continue to partner with La Marinda Village on programs and events. Continue to co-sponsor events with other Commissions. And seek greater coverage of older adult issues and the age-friendly process by partnering with the local media. Our accomplishments this year: Lafayette was accepted to be the first age-friendly city in Contra Costa County. This initiative is a partnership between AARP and the World Health Organization. I just want to add that membership in the AARP network of age-friendly states and communities means that a community's elected leadership has made a commitment to actively work with residents and local advocates to make their town, city, county, or state an age-friendly place to live. A community's age-friendly leaders and champions will likely include elected officials, government agencies, nonprofit organizations and foundations, academic institutions, area agencies on aging, community coalitions, local businesses, chambers of commerce, and residents, and lots of volunteers. Lafayette was accepted to be the first age-friendly city in Contra Costa County. This initiative is a partnership between AARP and the World Health Organization. There are eight domains of livability, each one of which has been assigned to a Commission member: outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation, housing, social participation, respect and social inclusion, civic participation and employment, communication and information, and community and health services. The major work of the Commission in 2019 has been to facilitate focus groups and larger events about the age-friendly process. Commission members also attended AARP World Health Organization roundtables in other cities throughout the year. Our kickoff event was held last February at the library, close to, well, we think probably 150 in there, number of people attended. And what you're seeing is the initial word cloud, which was created after the age-friendly kickoff meeting. 265 individual ideas came up, and those are all in that little word cloud. The City of Lafayette was presented with a citation declaring it an age-friendly community by Rafi Nazarian, who is the AARP World Health Organization California Leader. Following the initial kickoff, we held meetings for each of the domains, as well as a session to discuss emergency, preparedness, and safety, and a session to invite creative exploration. Ideas were documented, tagged by domain, and organized into themes. Let me just say that Erin Partridge, who is the Vice Chairman, is not here tonight, but she does all of this work for us. She's an expert in this kind of work.
Very nice.
And we're very happy to have her, because I don't know how well we do otherwise. Here's an example: benches, okay? So people would say, there should be benches, 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 all around town, but especially in the town center. And other people might say, more benches at the proper height for people in wheelchairs, perhaps. Benches donated in memory of a loved one. And that's how we come up with the processes, the process that says, we need more benches because people are looking for it. Here's a second example: process, with three of the tagged ideas. We need to look for things we can do easily right away. Find a place and a project and focus on it. We need energy around ideas and projects. Partnerships are important. The word cloud based on themes, these clusters can help us decide the next step. The larger letters, the larger words are the things that were said more often. That's how word clouds present. And the smaller ones were still things that came up, but were not presented as more, as In the fall of 2019, we had our priority-setting meeting. And the priority-setting meeting was held so that we could go to the next step after our kickoff and say, okay, here we are. We're doing this now. Attendees were asked to provide their top five ranked items and to engage in further discussion of the themes. And we did that over a two-hour period, actually here. The Commission will now use this ranking to strategically sort through all 680 ideas. And you can see, based on the chart that Erin provided us, what the frequency of themes before they were ranked, then how they were ranked, and then the totals, so we get an idea of what people in town are looking for. Immediate response is important to all of us. And it was brought up at the priority-setting meeting. The process of becoming more age-friendly has already begun. The focus groups and larger meetings brought some needs to the surface that were immediately addressed. Jonathan announced that the pickleball court is up and running. And the other thing that we found vitally important was that the hearing loop in this room was not working. And they were able to make it work. So we've already had two achievements that we're quite proud of. As far as our accomplishments, we hope to have continued relationship with the Youth Commission. However, our Commissioner, Erin, is unable to attend their regular meetings at this time. But youth have been involved in the work on the World Health Organization AARP Age-Friendly Initiative. We have maintained a connection with the Crime Prevention Commission and included updates relevant to older adults in our meetings. We have an ongoing partnership with La Marinda Village, which provides numerous varied programs, such as educational lunch-and-learn presentations by local specialists, and the monthly Let's Do Lunch gatherings. And two of our Commission members are directly involved with La Marinda Village, so we have great input from our Commission members and to the Village. We have maintained a connection with Emergency Services Commission and included updates relevant to elder adults in our meetings. Representatives from this Commission also attended the Safety and Emergency Preparedness Domain Meeting. We've supported the La Marinda Spirit Van. We've delivered brochures and promoted the program to local medical offices and faith communities. We post volunteer information. The Spirit Van will be an essential part of the Age-Friendly City Initiative, as transportation is one of the eight domains of livability. Mary Brunz gives monthly updates to the Commission on the Spirit Van and issues impacting older adult transportation. Mary has been a key partner in the age-friendly work. The Transportation Expenditure Plan will be on the March 2020 ballot, asking Contra Costa voters to authorize a new one-half-cent sales tax that could generate $3.6 billion in revenues over 35 years for the additional improvements to the transportation system in Contra Costa County. This measure will set aside $180 million for accessible transport for seniors, vets, and people with disabilities. The Senior Services Commission will now begin their meetings with stakeholders for each domain to determine what the next steps will be to help complete the circle and how the stakeholders can help develop their plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. That was very good.
That was really good.
Are there any questions from the Council?
Yes. I do. You guys are really organized. You took that task force and just immediately branched off and assigned people and did that. That's a great amount of work, and I appreciate this.
Thank you.
Yeah. I do have a question. With your definition of process, what does that mean to you?
To me, it means how to find the specific project that we're looking at for, and find a place for it, and focus on that, and then branch out from there. For instance, at the pickleball court was a simple example, because we didn't, that was sort of being done. But because people were questioning what we were doing and how quickly the question came up, you know, how long's this going to take? Well, we know, I think, within the Commission, that's going to take a while for all of this to be achieved. This is not going to happen overnight. But, boy, we were able to do that right away. And the hearing loop, that was very quick, because I don't know if Orlando, somebody was here who was able to just go in and hook it up so that it's accessible now. But the process, I think it's the idea of how we go about
Exactly.
what we're going about to get to where we're going to go.
Right. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Burks?
Yeah, thank you. I, you know, I'll save my comments maybe until after public comment on how proud I am of you all.
Thank you.
Just to see you sitting there just made my day. But I did have a question on the word cloud. I think the smallest word on there was traffic. And do you have any thoughts on why that would be? I think this is the first meeting I've been to in three years where there hasn't been a huge complaint about traffic in the city. And maybe it's just folks aren't on the road during congestion hours or whatnot. And you don't, if there isn't an answer, there's not an answer. If it wasn't apparent, it just seemed really small, and it was, it just kind of, to me... There it is. Right below the T in safety.
Parking is a small two.
Yeah.
Parking is a small two?
Yeah. Oh, there we go. All right. Two for two tonight.
After you've lived in Lafayette for a certain amount of time, you learn when not to go where.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Do not go to Trader Joe's tomorrow.
Okay. That makes...
Or then between 10:00.
Yes.
Lunchtime's okay.
Got it.
And after school.
Right.
Okay. I figured it was something along those lines. I just wanted to, wanted to ask. Thank you.
Yeah.
We did ask the people to focus
Yeah.
on older adult issues.
Okay.
We realized that parking and traffic is one that affects everybody.
Okay.
Yeah. And it did come up. Traffic and parking came up repeatedly. But unfortunately, Erin isn't here to talk about the process that we get the word cloud. I'm not familiar with it, how it's done. But I'm, I think all of these are the most important things. That's what we're looking at, these, the most important
Yeah.
things. Because there are many other things that were brought up, but these were...
The whole idea was to look at the same issues which were brought up in February, but look at them in a different way. What were you looking for? Safety and...
Other kinds of ways of looking. So initially, we looked at the domains, and then secondarily, we looked at the themes, which was not our favorite word. But look at the, there were 500 and some responses. So we had to figure out a way to look at it, put a different label on it.
Yeah.
And those will all eventually feed into the various domains. I think that's the purpose of it, to get all this information together, and then to let it feed into the domains and take it from that perspective, hopefully.
Thank you.
Well, it's very exciting to have the process. I had a chance to participate in the fall meeting, and it was very interesting, good ideas came out of that. So I appreciate that. I did have a question also. Our current issue with our public safety power shut-offs, our PG&E power turn-downs, were you getting any feedback from the senior community on that? Are people being taken care of? Are they getting support that they need?
I don't think it...
Dorothy's shaking her head. Did you have any?
Yeah, I didn't. We haven't had a meeting since then.
You haven't heard anything?
I don't believe.
Okay.
Since the PSPSS, we've not had a meeting.
Okay.
And so there wasn't an opportunity for that to come up. But I was very glad to see that the city had filed a bill, sent a bill to PG&E.
Yeah. No, that's...
And I was looking at my homeowner's policy just today, wondering, could we get in on that, too?
Well, I don't know about that, but we'll do it one step at a time. I think one of the things that would be helpful, if you get any feedback at all, if you could relay that to us, because I think one of the worries has always been that our senior community is not going to be able to get the help they need and the warning they need when these events occur. And apparently, it's going to be happening on a regular basis, so I'd love feedback on that.
The other issue with that, of course, is anybody who has medical issues where they're connected to
Yeah, dependency.
or anything that needs electric to run, and they don't have generators, and they need to make sure they have a place to go, and that we have an ability to get them where they need to go. And we have to get that message out. I think that's really important.
Absolutely critical.
And we will, we will talk about that at our next meeting, which is December 5th.
Okay, so it's coming up. So if you get some feedback for us
Sure.
That would be really helpful. Councilmember Burks?
Yeah, just to follow on that, I was going to mention during my comments, one of the things that, you know, earlier in the year, when I, we were talking about the objectives and goals for the year, you know, one of them obviously was a strategy around what you were doing already, but really to put a focus around our policy positions to support the senior population in town. And, you know, I had this idea of if there was a wildfire or a major emergency, you know, having, you know, a buddy system, at least on your street, and nowhere to go to. And I lived in Burton Valley. We weren't under evacuation when the Lafayette fires started, but three of us sort of gathered in the middle of the street as we were preparing to leave, and kind of split up and ran down our street, knowing our neighbors knocking on doors. And I just think, the only reason I say it, you know, we're going to come out of fire season here, hopefully pretty soon, as it starts to rain, but, you know...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, hopefully. But, you know, hopefully, we can spend the year thinking about those types of things to prepare for next October. And, you know, to have people on their streets that are active, or in their neighborhoods that are active, that know where everybody lives, or the majority of folks live, that might need some help. And those knocks on those doors, you know, are critical. So it was a bit of a drill for us. But, so I'm really glad to hear that you had that separate session on emergency preparedness, and the latch-up that you've done with crime prevention. And I've seen, you know, Dorothy's sitting there, and I believe you're the last woman that I attended, and the other Commissions as well, because you are, unlike any other Commission that I've seen, tuned in to the Commission community in town. And it's just fantastic that you've organized and done that. And that's what, that's the whole spirit, I think, of our Commission community is about, so, thank you.
Thank you. We've worked quite hard on it, and the Commissioners have all been very attentive to getting to their meetings, you know, for Dorothy with her meetings, and Ruth, and everybody, and Conrad. Everybody has really worked hard to make sure we have a presence at those meetings, because if nothing else, we saw what happened at Rossmore
Yeah.
this week, you know? And we don't want that to happen. This is dangerous country. And I know my street just by itself. We have four of us, we're good neighbors, we know each other, but I don't know anyone up and down Mountain View at all, except Mike. I know Mike. But it's very important to us, and we work on new methods. There are other things that can be done. There used to be the vial of life, which people kept in their freezers, which was information for people who needed medical attention. If an ambulance came, they knew they could go to the freezer and pull out the vial of life and see the meds and all of that kind of information. So there are different things that we can do. And as I work with community and health, I'll be working with stakeholders, and we'll come up with some new things. Emergency prep, we had a great, the La Marinda Emergency, La Marinda Village Emergency Prep Meeting was fantastic.
Great.
That was out at LOPC. I don't know how many people you had, but
There were over 250.
Wow. It was amazing. And we walked out of there and like, we've got to get water. We knew all the things we had to do just by going to that meeting. So the encouragement to get people to attend these things, to understand where we have to go, and I think it's working. I think it's really coming together pretty nicely.
Well, you've had, in my opinion, you've had a banner year, the most impressive year I've ever seen from your Commission.
Thank you.
I just congratulate you on it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for all you've done, and we look forward to next year's report.
Thank you.
More achievements. Okay, that brings us to the Gas Safety Task Force update. Hi.
Let Michael sit up there.
Well, it took a little while, but here we are. How about that, huh?
I know, it was such a huge turn.
I know.
Well, I...
It's actually nice, because it's like, kind of a working type of...
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
There's a positive side.
There's definitely a positive side when we're in front of you guys. First off, thank you for putting us on agenda. We are glad to be here.
Up and in so the recording, it's for the audio.
Oh, I need it to be louder?
The audio, yeah, for the audio recording.
Okay.
Better? Thank you.
Okay. So we're the Lafayette Gas Safety Task Force, and this is us. We're missing one of our cohorts, Dennis Kuzak. And you can see, we're basically residents who've come together. We saw there was a need to improve gas safety in Lafayette. And we've been meeting for about a year, since November 2018, the first Alliance meeting of safety stakeholders, gas safety stakeholders. And we've had, been meeting about quarterly with the Alliance, and ad hoc as we need to with those stakeholders, which is the CPUC, PG&E, and of course, different members of City Council as we can, as well as we've met with Narup and Steve Falk back when. A big part of us meeting and getting things done is working within the Lafayette Gas Safety Alliance. And Councilmember Burks, I know you brought, you invited the PUC and PG&E to that meeting back in September last year, and that was really the basis of us coming back, because the community came out, there was a lot of comments, and it was really based on the lack of trust in PG&E, what the maintenance, what was going on, they couldn't answer questions. So very unfortunate, because if you can't answer questions about your infrastructure, there's kind of a lag in believing that they're doing what they need to do on that infrastructure. So we also want to thank, obviously, all our partners who have been meeting with us, and Greg has been great, obviously been at all the meetings, and facilitating those meetings happening at city offices. First off, why the Gas Safety Task Force? We talked about that. We want to improve gas safety. We want to be able to, bottom line, trust that PG&E knows what's in the ground, because that's kind of what spurred this all on. This is a picture of San Bruno, and the quote along the side is basically from Governor Newsom saying, there is an issue with trust. I mean, over and over, over the years, things haven't changed. And the San Bruno incident in particular was something that could have been avoided if care was taken, maintenance was done the way it was supposed to be, and records were in place. And here in Lafayette, there's some similar similarities, that there's missing information that they don't have, so they're averaging, and there's all sorts of things we'll continue, you'll see through our presentation. But we don't want that to happen here. Families, intergenerational, eight people died in that, and they weren't expecting that to happen. It was dinner time. We don't want that to happen. We're all about productivity, getting the data, making sure as best we can, we hold PG&E accountable, as well as advocate for prioritizations where it protects the safety of the community.
So this slide shows sort of, we call it the Pipeline 101 Slide, as you guys probably know, but just for those who don't, the pipelines run throughout Lafayette, hitting all of our major neighborhoods. It runs primarily, and these are transmission pipelines, steel pipelines, underground, for the most part, running north to south and splitting off east and west. And so this affects everybody. It's not theoretical. This is a high-energy source, under high pressure, running through parks, towns, neighborhoods. And that vision of San Bruno is something we don't want to see duplicated here. So that's what drives us every day to kind of further our cause on this. The next slide, we won't go into detail of this, but I just want to highlight, we are getting a lot of specific information from PG&E in these Alliance meetings, way too much to show in any one meeting. And so we want to distill some of the highlights on this. The last two rows, we have description of how many miles of pipeline are actually untested by PG&E, and the ages of those untested pipelines. So, you know, on average, they're 12-inch diameter pipeline under high pressure, but beyond that, they don't have a lot of information about what is underground, and that is extremely concerning to us. If you look up in the air and you see the electrical lines and the problems they have with that, they have a great understanding of what's above. But think about the fact that they don't have any knowledge of what was built in the 1950s down beneath. And that is, that should be something that drives us all. The next slide, you cannot read it all online. But if you refer to your printout...
Yeah, we can see it, yeah.
The blacks are actually in red. And what the red shows is, this is what we took a first stab at a dashboard. So if you were to ask us, just a litmus test, how are we doing in Lafayette? How safe are we? This is an example of...
What type?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is an example, if you could see the red, it shows basically that there is a lot of red in Lafayette.
Are those all darkened ones red? Oh, okay.
They're actually, the two noes on the right-hand side
Okay.
are green, and then the 100% is green in the middle top.
Okay.
So the takeaway on this, if you look at the columns, those are the five pipelines in Lafayette. And on the left-hand side, these are the major things we want to have done in our city: inline inspection, to know exactly what's going on in our pipelines, to determine width, determine if there's any anomalies. There's one pipeline that went through inline inspection just recently. We don't know how much length there is in Spring Hill. And then strength-tested, that's hydrostatic testing, to make sure that the welds are in place. And that's a little bit better. There's one that has 100% testing, and some that are in between. But automated shut-off valves, if there is an occurrence for any reason, there needs to be an ability to turn off the gas quickly. We've seen PG&E has had a history of slowly turning off gas. In San Bruno, it was over 90 minutes. In San Francisco, it was two hours. So we want... So we want to make sure we can turn it off quickly, especially if we're talking about shut-off valves that are located in the middle of Briones Park as they are for line 191. So that's a concern. And then exposed pipelines, we've talked about before, we would like those addressed and we don't think they've been addressed adequately. And then HCA refers to high consequence area and that's basically verifying the consequence of any explosion, well, how much population are in a certain area and that triggers additional rules and regulations that PG&E needs to follow. And we know some specific instances that we're trying to work with PG&E on to say, hey, what you've done is not sufficient, there's more. So.
Thank you.
The next slide, we wanted to give you our high takeaways, just these are our major findings based on working with PG&E for a year plus. And basically, our takeaway is that we cannot say that PG&E adequately identifies local risks and there's no simpler example of that than the exposed pipeline where they did CPSI tree cutting right next to the pipeline, but they ignored the trees that are overhanging the pipe itself. That just shows that there's a problem for them to say, hey, we're adequately managing your pipeline, when obviously, from a local perspective, they're not. So we've been wondering why? Why is that? Because these are people who are hardworking, honest, they've been voting a lot of time to us and we really appreciate, you know, the energy they bring to it, but there are some fundamental things that are wrong. One of them is that we believe PG&E looks at everything as a program. So the CPSI tree cutting is a program. They have a patrolling to make sure that they fly over the pipelines to see there's no digging going on near the pipeline. That's a program. But they're not looking at specific risks themselves and the example again of an overhanging tree is an example where they just, since it's not part of the program, it's not addressed, it's not identified. We also know in Spring Hill, sometimes residents have brought it up to PG&E and said, hey, this is an issue, but it's so hard for them to deal with it, it just goes unanswered. That's a problem. The other issue that was kind of a light bulb above our head was that PG&E looks at risk differently than we look at risk. You would think it'd be the same, but it's not. PG&E's risk is risk to their pipeline, it's risk to their personnel, it's risk also to their business image. They have scores attached to how people perceive them and what activities will hit that perception. We look at risk, of course, as will that explode my house? Will my neighborhood go up in flames? Those are two very different things and that is contributing to what we see today. The ability or I guess, lack of ability for PG&E to turn off the shut-off valves, as I mentioned, is concerning to us and we think there needs to be work there. And then the high consequence areas, as I mentioned as well, specifically Girl Scout Camp and Lafayette Christian Church are two examples right off the top of our heads. And then the second slide is just some more major concerns that we found. The wildfire risk is something that PG&E hadn't even considered when it deals with gas. So their concern about wildfire with electrical, when we brought up to them, hey, you have an explosion, say, near the Lafayette Community Center and that develops as a secondary effect into a wildfire, how do you use that in your model to evaluate risk? And we just got pretty much blank stares, like that's not something they thought of before. We do believe that they took that back and are considering it now, so we're glad we can contribute to what they do behind the scenes for other communities as well, but it is something that we believe is scary for our situation because all of Lafayette is either in Tier Two or Tier Three, high wildfire zone. The CPSI tree removal, again, the data they gave us, easily disproven, it's not verified and then they're not willing to address the fact that they could be increasing risk to the pipeline by leaving roots to decompose on the pipe. The follow-up has been lacking from PG&E. When we brought up exposed pipelines, it's taken months. In fact, the trees overhanging on one of the pipelines still remain. The regulator station has a lot of questions, as you all know. And then the information we get from PG&E is unverifiable and is often incomplete. We have many instances where you get two answers about the same question, so that's hard for us over the long term to figure out what to do with that. And then there's just plain communication. I think there's some work that could be done there.
Okay, so that basically is major findings which underlie the work that we are doing and in the middle of with PG&E as well as the PUC via the alliance and via meetings we have been having with PG&E gathering data. So one of the big ones is the exposed pipeline sections of spans, particularly in Briones. Dennis, who is a catastrophic risk analyst, he's not here, but he did his own little analysis of the analysis that PG&E hired and it was inadequate. They assumed there was no welds. They didn't, they only did for the span, didn't even look at, you know, the rest of the line or where the supports were. So it's very minimal and he, we did send that, he sent that directly to the PUC. We will be following up with the PUC. And to Michael's point of communication, literally, we got a message from, erroneously from Vic Baker saying to the rest of the team, do not respond. And that is a big issue. Obviously, that's a major, you know, big challenge with PG&E. If our local customer experience guy can't even talk to us or is instructing the team not to respond to us, that's a big red flag. HC analysis is also something, as Michael alluded to, that should be verified. There, we're not sure of the maps they've given and this is downtown. This is obviously the Girl Scout Camp, which has been operation for 40 years. So we've also brought that up to the PUC because that is definitely a non-compliance issue, so we're going to try to get background on that. The regulator station has lots of issues around it. Most importantly, that the city doesn't have information and we don't believe, actually, it's a kind of a big deal. There's going to be 12 valves put in there, six of them, we imagine are shut-off valves of some sort and six of for excess gas release. We would like to understand how it's supposed to operate, what kind of risk that poses to the immediate neighborhood, as well as what kind of construction they're bringing in. Anytime you put equipment above ground, it increases the risk of gas incident and particularly at that very congested intersection, that's actually a red flag, even from federal standpoint of where you place regulator stations. Also, it's in a place that has flooded, which is, we believe, probably why the valve station needs to be reconstructed, but they aren't forthcoming to say why. So we would like to understand that. The neighborhood definitely deserves some more information because they can weigh how they want to react or, you know, be, live with that risk. And obviously, there's, the HOA is working on aesthetics. Interestingly enough, the HOA asked for the, a stone wall to continue, but that's actually a safety feature that PG&E should have thought of because they were going to just put a wire fence up. So it's, there's a lot of things missing, this goes to local threat, they're not looking at what matters. We would like PG&E to recommit to alliance meetings. There's increased dig-in accidents year over year, I think we've seen, this is on distribution lines. Integrity testing schedules are constantly deferred. This kind of refers back to the HCA because there are schedules that you have to follow per regulation if HCA is properly identified. So that's just, you know, the top line of those current issues. Recommended next steps that we continue to work with stakeholders. One way that would really be helpful is formal recognition of city support for the Gas Safety Task Force. We noticed that PG&E gets around to giving us information, maybe, maybe not, and obviously our last communication was, you know, don't, no more direct communication, which we would appreciate some help moving forward with that. We do request the city reschedule the next alliance meeting. The PG&E, I think, is looking for that. CPUC is actually looking for that because we talked to them about, you know, what if PG&E doesn't show up? And they said, well, what, did you ask them to reschedule? And so we need to get that going. We are hoping to get PG&E to assign a local resource with community and technical knowledge. The people that have, we have been talking to historically usually don't have the information to talk with us that are most informed about projects and we have to wait, go through different layers. We are also requesting that the city consider hiring a technical consultant to collaborate on all the data that we are being able to get from PG&E and that we hope to get via, we're actually, Michael and I have put in motion to be a party to the proceedings of PG&E Safety Culture proceeding, that's in front of the CPUC. And once you do that, you're allowed to request data. So we're hoping to get more data specific to Lafayette. We are also recommend that the stakeholders conduct emergency drills. It's our understanding that there's not really drills done in terms of if there was gas incident, whether it be a leak or anything worse than that, how to, what the response is, what's PG&E response time, how would they get through traffic, pointing again to the local risks, that I don't think they understand our traffic patterns and how difficult it would be to access even something like the regulator station should there, anything happen there. These are two-lane roads to get through. And I think all of us and the city as far as supporting us is really commit to the urgency and importance of gas safety because it's necessary to be proactive and being proactive means understanding what's happening as well as what's not happening and putting some urgency to the importance of knowing. And then you could figure out how to lessen risk, decrease risk and be proactive about safety. Let's see, so one thing we were, didn't make the cut and it shouldn't have, I just want to say over the past year, some of the accomplishments of the Gas Safety Task Force. I think first off is just really these alliance meetings and driving that and driving PG&E to bring information to us, even though it's questionable at some points. But it is important and we do give them credit for giving us what they can and we're still need to work on the collaboration, but that's a good accomplishment. We've had the PUC come do a audit and they found a couple of regulatory non-compliance, so PG&E has addressed those. One of them was signage where the pipelines are and another one was a valve that was mislabeled, kind of very important in terms of maintenance as well as emergency response. So that's a big one and what else can we say? There's a few things. Oh, the exposed line on Lafayette Maraga Trail was prioritized. Even though we have some questions as to that priority, we're glad that they did mitigate that and I think that was because of the focus and awareness with us all working together and coming to you and also the community being more aware. I think that that's another accomplishment of being a focal point and a resource for people in the community. So that's it and I want to thank Howard and Dave and Dennis and Michael. It's been a lot of time we've been putting into this and it's important to us because we all live near the gas pipeline and people don't think about it and I wish we didn't think about it, but once you know what you know, it's hard to step away without, you know, kind of wanting to make things better. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. You have done a lot of good work. Questions? Vice Mayor Candell?
Yes, wow. No, you've done so much more than that. Pat yourselves on the back. You even went to Atlanta, right? Again, for, yes.
Yeah, actually, that's true. I did go, I had training in Houston for, by engineering pipeline consultants and we've attended two safety conferences. Were able to meet some of the federal administrators and regulators and a lot of different other communities as well as operators and it's a wonderful opportunity and to bring back information here.
Thank you so much for everything you do, obviously. I just looked at that map, how many other cities have as many gas lines as we do? Do we have any idea?
No, I mean, not offhand, but when we look at the overall maps, most of them are straight lines, like up through, say, Milpitas, say, up to San Francisco and below. We have an interesting intersection here and I think it's because it's so historic and it is based on Lafayette's growth, interestingly enough. Line 3002 and 3001 are actually formerly distribution feeder mains and PG&E considers them transmission, probably because of the high pressure they run under. That's a very high pressure for a distribution main to be running, which is why they kick it into the transmission line program. There's certain regulations that they have to follow. That being said, that is one of the big issues that we are concerned with because they are treating them like transmission lines, running them like transmission lines, but they are not testing them like under transmission lines. Their current schedule is not to test them until the mid 2020s. That would be part of this line, means it's going to be over 70 years old before they get any kind of internal testing, which then they might consider like, well, do we replace it? And obviously, that's another issue. So that's why high consequence area is important for us to make sure they confirm with us.
Right, okay. So after all these wonderful suggestions, I'm sure we'll get into that a little bit more, but one of the ones in there is like, the question, how do we recognize you? What is your ask on that one?
Well, that's where we're hoping you can help us with that. We, I know we talked about, when was that, maybe a year ago, about being formally recognized. So that might be a way to do that or in the very least, I think recognizing to PG&E that we are working on behalf of the city. So I'm not sure, I mean, your ideas would be helpful in helping us to be more, most effective, so that there's not this, you know, we're giving the city information but maybe not us or vice versa. So everything, you know, we get, we can also report back to the city and be focused on this as our focus. So if you have ideas, but, you know, our first thought was to be formally recognized as a task force, but we're not sure of all the parameters around that and if that's limiting in itself too, because we do work ad hoc, we're meeting with people as we need and I'm not sure that, you know, if that's.
Okay.
Fit or not.
And maybe there's an idea of doing a utility task force. If electrical now is, you know, from a year ago, it's a lot more of an issue than it has been.
Right.
Obviously, same operator, but maybe there's some more emphasis around having a group to maintain that if we have a wider array of responsibility.
Okay. I've got two quick ones more. The city to hire a tech consultant, do you, how much, how much time are you estimating, you know, like in a year or how many hours or, you know, what's the workload you guys are thinking?
Well, we actually have a, we did a grant proposal for the federal government for that and unfortunately, it's a limited amount of money. Community is not as well, I should say, what's the word, well opportuned as ours, we got those grants. So we do have, it's basically, I don't remember the hours offhand, but it was a limited time and we have money around that. I think the whole total package was around, do you remember, 40 grand?
Forty, fifty.
Oh, okay. Forty or 50 grand. And we had proposed this before, but the money that the city received from PG&E via the CPSI, we proposed that that would be a good pot of money to use because it is an education. It is an education of what, basically all the data and we absolutely have received testing data even from the PUC, that they can kind of look through it, make sure it's complete. I myself, from my layman's perspective, saw, wow, there's duplicate records here. There's a lot of messy stuff in there that someone could just kind of cut through. And also, we're looking to that person to, to make recommendations based on what's best for the city, not just mere compliance, which is what PG&E goes by and even the CPUC. So the point is to really have someone who has technical knowledge, safety knowledge, who can make recommendations based on, you know, if I was building the city or if I'm buying the city and I'm buying this infrastructure, kicking the tires and what they would do to get it to a place where they felt comfortable with.
Right.
Especially going forward, obviously PG&E is not going to replace these, all of these lines anytime soon, so we need to know what is, what are those areas that they really need to look at, whether it's bringing up to a certain place that obviously would be at compliance, but better than that and what should be replaced as, you know, moving forward. And then we could put those recommendations to PG&E and CPUC to work together and collaborate on, because there's budgeting in the background that can be worked out. You know, we, I see that through the ratepayers case and the listings of projects, right?
Okay. Tom, go ahead.
Yeah.
The federal government through the Department of Transportation started requiring gas pipeline operators in 2004 to have an integrity man. gas pipeline operators in 2004 to have an integrity management program, which effectively is a proactive look at what are the hazards and how do we prevent incidents from occurring? And so we've had that in place for 15 years as a, as effectively federal law. And if you then look at PG&E's incident rate over the last 15 years, it has gotten dramatically worse in that period. So just in a macro sense, you could say, there's something seriously wrong about PG&E's compliance with this federal requirement. But it's one thing to use the words integrity management. The, the nature of this is so technical and so industry-specific that if you start to get into a debate with PG&E about this kind of stuff, they can defer to their experts and we're effectively powerless because, and so what we're saying is, if we were to hire someone, and there's plenty of consultants out there that used to work for the Pipeline and Hazardous Material Safety Administration, right? Or work in the industry as being the gurus and they understand the rules and they work for, in many cases, companies that are excellent with regard to this. So that allows an advocate like that person to be able to confront PG&E's quit talking and be able to say, wait a minute. And they know the questions to ask and how to display the information, that's very powerful. And, you know, if we're really wanting to put some teeth in this, to me, that's a very effective thing to do.
Okay, all right. Just want to really quickly add to that. That's kind of the balance of the, the three-legged stool that picture that's used from federal government down. It's really a balance of knowledge and to Dave's point, we have an imbalance and, and that puts it at a disadvantage and we're the ones that, safety is at risk, so.
You answered my, my next question, so I have no more questions.
Okay.
Councilmember Burke. Thank you. I would first like to just thank you for your, your service to the community and it's, we're going on several years now. And when you think of community and us coming together as a community to help each other and that's what makes Lafayette special, you know, you, you are the, you are the poster group, poster individuals for that. And, and you are woven into the fabric of our community in such an important way. I just want to say thank you. I've had a lot of personal one-on-ones and group one-on-ones with, with y'all and I find you professional, very dedicated to the cause and you really are doing what you're doing for the benefit of the safety of your, of your neighbors. And that says, that says a lot. And again, I, I want to thank you. I think, you know, to do what you're doing with utility companies such as PG&E is not only, you know, challenging and complex, I mean, it is beyond the realm to have to deal with, you know, an absolutely failed utility that continues to lie and continues to hurt our community. And if we didn't have you, I think we'd be a lot worse off as a city. So, I was going to ask the same question about recognition.
Yeah.
I'd written that down. I think by having you here tonight and having you on the agenda, I believe, just as my own opinion, we do, we do recognize you. I recognize you and the importance of your group. This has morphed into many different alliances and task forces and, and individuals and so forth, but, but they're all in the right direction. When I asked PG&E and the PUC to appear and the show and the turnout, it was what it was and it, and it was, it was, it was for a reason. And, you know, going back to my days in the Foreign Services Diplomat, I, I do believe that dialogue really is the best form of advancing anything. And it's, could be three steps forward and five steps back, but you stayed in the game doing that. And I just, I would like to recognize that and I don't, I don't know if there's, you, you offered a few ideas around recognition and maybe that's something we can discuss if the mayor would like us to do, maybe as a full council or, or so forth. But one of, one of the things I was actually thinking of before this meeting was, you know, looking at the list of commissions that we have that, that offer so much value to the community. I, I really, really believe that the council should take a very serious look at considering the creation of a new council, or a new, I'm sorry, a new commission. Formal commission on utility safety. Call it what you'd like, you know, we'd have to understand what the mission is, but there is no more important time, in my opinion, to have a council-appointed group looking at these issues for the community. And I, I just see an enormous benefit from it. There are some limitations. Mr. Dawson brought up, you know, there's the Brown Act, there's other, there is other parameters that are perhaps maybe more restrictive than what you're, you know, enables what you're doing today, but I, I think it would send a signal to the community and to the broader Bay Area that how seriously we're, we're taking this and how we want to, we want to elevate this. We sat in a coffee shop two or three months ago and I've, out of pure transparency, I do want to say, I, I did make a suggestion that they asked to come, that they asked to appear before us tonight. Some of my colleagues may have done the same, I don't know, we don't, because of the Brown Act, we don't, we don't discuss amongst ourselves things, but I'm glad you did. And, and I, and I think, and I hope people watch and, and listen to what you've said tonight and I hope you come back and I hope you keep us posted. And I hope you ask us to do more, because I think we've reached, you know, certainly an inflection point where I think the council should bring to bear at least as much power as we can on these safety issues, because they're, they're absolutely critical. And avoiding another San Bruno or, or something perhaps even worse is, should be our, our number one priority. So, I don't have any other questions. The recognition one was the big one for me, but those are just my thoughts. And again, I'd just like to thank you very, very, you know, for me personally and my family and as a council member, for the, for the journey and the work you continue to do and the passion you have around, around this and your willingness to come to the table and meet with, with the regulators, meet with PG&E when they decide to show up, engage the community, be known as, as the community subject matter experts. You know, your willpower and your commitment to this has just been, it's been incredible, enormous, profound, and I'm, and I'm just blown away that you're just still in this fight, going at it. And it's just fantastic, so. That's my two cents.
Thanks. Well, I can't add anything to what Councilmember Burks has said that would be any more, I guess, an indication of what we owe you for all the work you've done and, and how much we appreciate all the work you've done. He said it very well. I, I think one of the things that we should do is in our next budget cycle, we can have a look at our commissions and what possibilities we might have for something related to infrastructure in general, because I think the linkage to PG&E, both electrical and gas, now becomes more of a, an issue for the city. And to be quite honest, you may find that what we can do isn't really something that's going to fit your style, but that would be the forum that would have the opportunity to create the meetings, to allow things to occur, to allow us to put money in place to get certain things done and you always have input on that. So, we need to talk about it and I think we can put it on the agenda to, to discuss it in the context of costs and all of that. The other thing I'm concerned about is our own liability, and I think I've talked to you about this in the past. We need to be very careful on how much we take on as a city of owning this system in terms of what's the right way to operate it, or what's the wrong way to operate it, or what it has capacity to do, blah, blah, blah. And that is something that I haven't talked to City Attorney about, but I do want to have some input from her, because I think even if we go to a commission stance, we're going to have to be careful on how much we own the issues when we start bringing them forward and we assert them as being the thing they should be doing and they argue and say, no. So, you know, what happens after that? So, there's a lot of pieces I think that need to be dissected and I don't know of any other cities that have commissions of this type. I, I, I'm not familiar. Do you know of any other cities that have anything like this and?
Um, there's under safety committees, yeah. And I think, I think just because there might not be something off top of mind doesn't mean it's not time for that, particularly in this.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. What I'm just saying is that we will want to look at models.
Right.
From other places if we're going to consider it here. And that'll give us kind of the template to put our own, it's like ordinances, we do ordinances, we go and research all the other ordinances and then we figure out what we want to do to make our own. So if you have any other suggestions in terms of other cities that have something like this.
I can put that together. I know that through the Pipeline Safety Trust, they've worked over 20 years with communities at different levels of, for pipelines particularly. I think California is the, basically the state having the most issues with utilities but, on the electrical side. But, yeah, I can see what I can pull together there.
Yeah.
And I think it, it's important though to, to remember, we're not looking to direct at all the way PG&E operates, any utility would operate, but more to draw attention to the safety issues and also work with the regulators to see if there is anything that should be changed, because that's how laws change, that's how compliance changes. It's not by us telling, you know, hey, what, but by a regulator saying, yeah, there is actually a better standard that needs to be made and then they can put that into a new regulation. So that's really, I think, the ability that we have in terms of advocating not to tell utility what to do, but work with the regulator to have them tell them what to do. So as far as liability, you know, that, I, I don't see that. I did bring back a guide, I'll drop off to City, I'm sorry I didn't bring it, about how cities can work with operators as far as the different states and the level of California right now as it's known. What I can say about the PUC is they are, they are trying to be reactive, like any bureaucracy though, they move slowly and they need, you know, they need the persistence of, of people like us in cities to keep on them for that change. So, I'll bring you more information so you can talk.
That'd be helpful. Very good.
When the Pipeline Safety Trust was founded, that arose from a serious accident in the Pacific Northwest and that particular city went to bat and really pushed for reform. So, I think there's some lessons that we could provide for Lafayette from the founder of Pipeline Safety Trust and they're in touch with many other cities that are proactive in this area.
Okay, well, that's what I'm suggesting, is that we can have some examples. That helps us begin to formulate an, an idea that might relate to our own situation.
There's a perfect example.
One of the things that's happened is that Lafayette's getting much more response from PG&E and much more response from PUC. All this activity is causing things to be done within the city that would have not been done had it not been for the work of this group.
Absolutely. And to me, that, that. We all understand that and we appreciate it very much. And I think that one of the things that we can take away from this is that obviously they respond to someone who comes and knocks on their door and then kicks in the door in some cases and says, there's a problem.
Gets newspaper articles written.
Yes.
There's all kinds of ways. So it's interesting.
Press has been very helpful.
They've been, they've been very attentive to us because we have been noisy. So if we can formalize that into some kind of a process, that would be really good. And we certainly will try to get the next meeting back on track. I know that Greg is, I think, away now, but we'll get that going in terms of the next alliance meeting.
That's great.
Good. Okay. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your support.
Okay, hold on a second. Narup, do you have something?
I want to make sure I have my list, to-do list. I, I'll work with Greg when he gets back next week to make sure that the next meeting is back on track. And I, if I heard correctly, the mayor indicated that a consideration of some kind of a commission or committee would be considered as part of the next budget update.
Correct.
Budget review.
Yeah. And we should begin to take a look at hopefully some examples of other commissions that may exist out there, so we can see what that form really looks like, because it's not really clear exactly what it looks like at this point.
If it's not a formal commission, can we propose what it might look like though?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You just are, you know.
Well.
Trailblazing.
No, you can, you can, you can propose whatever you like. I guess what I'm suggesting is that if we make it a formal commission, it's going to have to comply with all the other rules of every other commission.
Sure, understood, yeah.
And I think, you know, Michael kind of alluded to that, it might be a little more formal than you would find acceptable to, to get things done. I don't know. But that's part of the question that has to be asked.
Right.
When we get to the point of saying, this is it, here are the rules around it, you may say, great, we'll show up as public comment and throw some things on the table, but we can't quite meet all those requirements.
Understood.
I don't know. We'll see. Okay?
Thank you.
Well, there's, what about the technical consultant? That was something else you mentioned. So you have this grant money or you?
No, we applied for that.
Applied for that.
They didn't get it this period.
Okay.
You know, so we'll keep trying, but in the meantime, we know it's something that needs to be done sooner than later.
Right.
You know, just to, like I say, balance that knowledge and going forward. Regulator station, it would have been nice to get some more input on that to, you know, that horse is kind of out of the stable, but there's still things we need to understand about that.
Okay. Okay, so, is there anything, can the city write a letter to endorse your grant application next time or this time?
Yeah, next time we will, we'll, that would be great. That's a great idea. We'll do that when the next grant period comes around, but that's a while from now, so we're, you know, looking at now.
And what other current issues are still outstanding that we need to be pushing them on? The sagging pipeline?
The span for sure.
Yeah.
Because that is an issue and, and the wildfire threat, by the way, is a new threat that I think with climate change has come about. I did hear from, actually a PG&E person at the Pipeline Safety Trust meeting that they actually evacuated people up in Sonoma because there was above-ground regulator station and the rubber would melt if the fire came through there. So to me, that's like, wow, that's not even something that we're hearing about and we, you know, which is why I think the, the build of the regulator station is important, what they have at the valve, I mean, these are all things that need to be looked at or we want to know that they are looking at them, basically.
Great. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to consent calendar. Are there any items that council members want to pull from the consent calendar? Anyone from the public want to pull any item? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move all items on the consent calendar.
A second.
Motion and second. We'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. We're to council commission reports, council members reporting activities and consideration of matters council members wish to initiate for placement on future agenda. Vice Mayor Candell?
Thank you. The A-bag presentation was, we'll make that, I guess, next meeting, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Burke?
A few things. I participated yesterday in with Peter Reed and Jeff Bellinger from the Trails Committee from the Parks Trails Recreation Commission on some trail restoration work yesterday morning. And thank you to John and, and your department. This has been the one thing that I've been bugging John about since I became a council member that I wanted to do. And I have a blister to show proof that I was actually there. We, I posted some pictures.
It looks kind of painful, too.
It hurts a lot. In an office environment, it really hurts. I got to get out more. But, you know, it is, our trails are amazing and what a couple of guys can do in a few hours is, I put some pictures on Facebook. It's really cool. I think, you know, I totally support any ideas to get more. I went home and told my wife what I was doing and she said, well, wow, we could have the whole, let's get the neighborhood together and go out, you know, one, one day, 20 of us. And I know, I know you guys have great ideas and, you know, and, and forming things, but it, it's just, it was incredibly, it was just a real neat experience out there and to, to be doing that. So, I really enjoyed doing that. Two other, just quick issues. I want to be transparent more with what I'm posting on social media. And so two issues that I have taken up on social media, and I'm speaking on social media as a sole council member, not on behalf of the council, on any of these issues. There was a Chronicle article yesterday on the front page associated with, with BART and with. and with BART's, with some recent incidents associated with violence and the tragic event of an individual who was killed recently on a platform. The new board, president of the Board of Directors of BART made a comment that was quoted in the Chronicle that, really, the cities and counties, you know, it's up to us to really solve this problem, I'm paraphrasing, and that, you know, excuses from cities that, oh, it's BART's problem, you know, that, that, those are, those are irrelevant. I took a, a, a lot of frustration to Facebook associated with that quote, and I'm very critical of, of BART and the way they're managing their, their system right now from a safety perspective, and I articulated that in my, my Facebook posting yesterday, specifically articulating my concern for, for BART riders from our community, since we do have a station here. I believe that they should do a lot more, and that it is not up to us, our city, or our county, to make sure that our folks get from point A to point B safely on BART's system. I believe it's up to them to solve the problem that they have not solved yet very strongly. The second one was a, an issue on NIMBYism that was an op-ed written by a Cal Matters journalist, and I did take issue with a few remarks that this individual had written about in the op-ed, casting a wide net over basically every city in the Bay Area as being NIMBY or most cities, and I suggested in my, my email to him and their board and their president and executives that, you know, Lafayette, speaking on behalf of Lafayette and knowing and living here, that we've done some really great things on the development front and have enabled the construction of a number of units that are affordable and near transportation, and that we work very well, our planning department and our commissions with developers to do that. And the response that I received from this particular author was very unfortunate. So, everything's on public record, so I just wanted to make sure that that was, you know, out of transparency that I, I mentioned those things. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have nothing to report, so we'll go to the city manager's update.
Good evening, council members. I'm pleased to report that we have hired two new staff members to the planning department. Our senior planner begins work next week, and we will have an associate planner coming onboard in early January. We did have a resignation in the engineering department. Our assistant planner resigned, and Tracy is, has advertised for an assistant or an associate position. So if you know somebody who would like to join our team, please let them know. Onto the holiday closure. The city offices typically closes between Christmas Eve and New Year's Day, and this year, which is unusual, Christmas Eve comes on a Tuesday, which means only staff would be expected to show, to work on Monday, December the 23rd, and it may be difficult to, to have people come to the office, because many of them are already planning to take that week off. I think staff has worked really hard this year, and I am requesting and recommending to the city council that it consider making December the 23rd, which is a Monday, a paid, extra-paid holiday. This is a one-time issue only, just given the way the week works out, and that would be my recommendation.
So just to clarify, the way the item is written, it says, add December 23rd, 2020.
It's 2020.
No, 2019.
Sorry, 2019.
That's a typo I was just telling Narup.
Okay.
2019. You want to give us that next year? We can
It's 2019.
Well, it might be a choice deal. I mean, it could be this year or next year, you know, one or the other.
We'll take this year.
Okay, it's 2019.
Yes.
This year, okay, that's what I thought, but when I saw the 2020, I began to wonder. All right, any thoughts or comments?
Yes, I am a very big supporter of that, and it, my generosity stems from the generosity shown by all the employees during the PSPs's, and how hard and difficult that was for everybody. So, yes, I'm a fan.
Any comments?
I fully endorse, endorse it.
Okay, well, we basically can make a, a quick motion and second, and hopefully vote on this unanimously. Do we have a motion?
Do I have the wording? So I'd like to make a motion to add December 23rd, 2019, to holiday schedule for regular city of Lafayette employees.
Second.
Okay, call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It's unanimous.
The half of the employees really thank you for that.
Excellent, okay. That brings us to the Public Art Committee, and we had two very good interviewees or applicants for two positions. It's always nice when it works out that way, so we would recommend, oh, the name right here? Dave Dandero and Yuki Fujimoto to be on the Public Art Committee. So I will move that.
A second.
Any discussion? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is she unanimous? Okay, city clerk will get that word out to them. Written communication, we have a letter requesting a $2,000 grant over two years to fund the next La Merinda poet laureate, which will be chosen in early 2020. Any discussion on this? Vice Mayor Candell?
None for me.
Okay, I, this is something we've done consistently. They're asking for two years this time, trying to hook us for a longer period of time. Kind of subtle. Okay, do I have a motion?
Yeah, make the motion that we support the request of $2,000 grant over two years to fund the next La Merinda poet laureate.
I would second.
Okay, motion and second, call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It's unanimous. So that will go forward, hopefully, in the next cycle. And with that, we are going to close session. Thank you very much.
Thank you.